All right, good morning. I've called over to bring you the scheduled board of supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, August 14, 2018, and ask if everybody please join the boards. We honor America with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, good morning. First item, as always, is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment really on anything you'd like to comment on. So if there's anybody wishing to do so, come on up. And see no one moving to the microphone. This morning, we have presentation, the quarterly presentation from the Ames Economic Development Commission. Brenda and Dustin moving, but I see we also have Dan Colhane with us today. We've got to have wise words from Dan before this is all said and done.
I asked him if he wanted to talk, and he said, "No, I'll just be an observer." So I'm sure if he has questions...
We'll make sure there's a question.
They'll be glad to take this sort of hat. So, good morning. Good to see you. We'll actually be updating you on two major things today in our quarterly report. I'm going to start first with workforce and give you some of the things we're doing as it relates to workforce and again, what could be possible without your very generous support of our efforts. So, gosh, a month or so ago, there was a question related to kind of breaking down the revenue that we received to support our workforce efforts. And rather than speak out of turn and because of our differences in our fiscal years, I wanted to make sure I was giving you accurate numbers. So if we look, our fiscal year runs from January through December. So if you look at the revenue we received to support our workforce efforts, you are the most generous of our supporters, single annually at $40,000 a year. And that is an increase. And as we put our plan of work together for our current year, we just saw really a need to buckle down and almost double our efforts as it relates to workforce. And so without your generous support, we wouldn't have been able to do that. And then the city of Ames also is new contributor this year and contributing $15,000 for our workforce efforts. And then what I've done is we collect from our private sector $61,000. So as you look at the private-public partnership, again, a perfect example of how actually we've actually collected more now from the private sector. And as I look at that list, part of the reason I wanted to include that is it's very diversified across our industry sectors and it's also very diversified geographically. So we've got a Story County, we've got a Hudson contributor, and again, well represented from across our industries. So that's really where we're at with revenue. And I would tell you that I just had a chance to look at our July numbers and we're pretty much right on track to where we thought we would be. We entered the summer months with our internship programming and those do take quite a bit of our dollars. So, but again, that's where we're at from a revenue standpoint. Let's talk a little bit about unemployment. And June and July are interesting months for Story County in terms of unemployment. Should be a surprise to anybody that when you have an influx of 36,000 people that when they disappear for the summer months, your unemployment number is affected. So what's most important to look at that is we look at June to June. So a year ago, you know, I was rather new in the organization, and I think Dan would attest how I had an out-of-body experience when I saw 2.9%. But actually, as we dug into the numbers, there's about 3,000 people that move in terms of employment with universities and related businesses. So actually, where our June number for Story County was at 2%. So that's really the important number as we look at June and July is where are we at from a year ago? So if you look at the snapshot in June, we're really at 1,200 jobs that have been added and I Workforce Development tags 19 of those to the private sector.
And let's just talk about that one for a minute because what's interesting to me is as you track the numbers going way back, from 2000 to 2010, we only added 500 private-sector jobs in that entire decade. So we just added almost twice as much in one calendar year than we had in an entire decade, 2000 to 2010.
And I think about 1,200 people being so much bigger than somebody put in our community is in here. It is when you step back and you look at that, it is truly amazing. And very, very, very few places in Iowa, even though the economy is strong, can really look at that strong of job growth. In terms of our networking efforts and starting, well, in terms of the efforts we do to try to reach out to kind of our HR folks specifically, obviously, we're talking to our existing industry more than this, but this is really related to workforce discussions. So it's a hot topic with our business and industry. We've had 302 connections since the first of the year, 91 face-to-face visits, and a total of 50 different Story County businesses have been talked to specifically about how can we assist them in implementing part of our workforce solutions program to support their efforts. So we've just continued to have great response from our businesses while they're concerned about the tight labor market. I think they've, those that are willing to do something a little different and implement some additional strategies, they are finding people. And so especially opportunities that are full-time with benefits, those folks are getting people and I know our service sector is impacted. So a little bit on our networking efforts as it relates to workforce. Work in Ames, which is really kind of the key driver, we've got to first connect the job seeker to the jobs we have available. So we ended July with almost 75,000 searches on Work in Ames, and I think we can do better with a push to the end of the year. The number, I'll jump down to the bottom bullet, we're at an all-time high, at least in my tenure, in terms of jobs posted on Work in Ames. So there were well over 1,600 in the last couple of weeks. So we need to be continuing to enhance our efforts to promote Work in Ames, drive those searches up even further to get people to the job postings. So Facebook likes, Twitter, continue to drive a lot of messages through our digital marketing efforts. We have 569 people registered as job seekers on WorkinAmes.com. So I remind our employers frequently, I'd start there, it doesn't cost anything to search through those registered job seekers, and then we have 278 employers. So I would note, I don't see Alyssa in the audience, but I saw a number of jobs come through for Story County this morning. So somebody's been busy here posting something, so.
I was thinking, hey, before we move on from workforce...
Well, not quite done yet.
Okay. All right, well, I want to...
Yeah, go ahead.
...talk to us at some point about the outreach you've been doing in Marshall County and...
Oh, sure. Yep, and that's actually my presentation today. So we'll just...
I have another one. If we could go back a slide.
Oh, boy, now you're really... Let's see, I have just to put the others... Oh, there we are.
So of the 1,600 jobs posted, what's the geographic footprint of that? Are you going 30 miles or from Ames to all directions?
Oh, those are only Story County jobs, really. And occasionally, sometimes something from Boone slips in, but really, honestly, we pull pretty much Story County jobs. So the other, yeah, it's, it's, those are ours, more or less. So thanks for asking that. So let's talk a little bit about our internship program. And can't really see the photo, but we had a fabulous group of interns that participated in our See Yourself in Ames internship program. What a great opportunity we have to, this year, we made a very conscious effort to get them away from campus, and so we were in all different sorts of venues around Ames. We averaged 149 registrants for each event. Now, sometimes, since they don't pay, they sometimes get better offers and don't show up, but real strong registrations, real strong participation. We actually hosted the Des Moines Intern Group at our South event, co-hosted with Cultivation Corridor, lots of real positive, we kind of did that in conjunction with the board meetings. So the ABC Board, the Chamber Board had an opportunity to go with the interns as well. And then we had, on average, about 18 different Story County employers represented. So as we look to 19, some of the feedback we've seen is, you know, by the time I get done working on other things that I want to do, so I think you'll see us look to next year, maybe do a couple smaller events, some larger events, do a breakfast event, do a lunch event, to make sure that we're expanding the opportunity and the number of employers that are having a chance to be impacted by the programming. So again, an important part of what we do. Homebase Iowa, again, we wouldn't be able to support, be a part of this program without your generous support on the local incentive program. So since LeAnn and I and Brett really energized the efforts as it related to Homebase Iowa last September, so really, in almost a year, we've collected 150 resumes matched to Story County. We had one bad email in the mix, so we actually sent an introduction email to 149. We've been following up with notes, personal notes from our offices. I would note that LeAnn does the same for Story County. We followed up with emails, relocation videos, we've sent out the snazzy Smart Choice book. We've actually seen our Homebase in Iowa employers grow by 20 or 30 in the last year, which we're very excited about that. And the one thing I would tell you is I hear from about a third of them, and they always drop me a little message of how impressed they are that we take the time to follow up with them personally. And, you know, I, there are interesting matches to make in terms of their really unique experience, but I know I've gotten two of them committed. We've actually had our interns this summer do stories, and our goal is to actually release those stories around Veterans Day to feature what's going on. I know that I had one last week interviewing at Iowa State. I told them, "Just be patient, it's a long process," but even our largest employer is committed to interviewing some folks out of the program. So very excited about that. And again, I'll be participating next week in the first virtual career fair that Homebase Iowa is hosting. So very excited about that opportunity to have a chance to dialogue virtually, and then we'll connect our employers to those folks that are participating in that event.
Bridget, since you're able to see the resumes that are matched and matched to Story County, those are available to members of the public then also?
So actually, what happens is our Homebase Iowa employers, this is a secret to why you need to be a Homebase Iowa employer, and it's not a whole lot of work anymore to be that, they're actually matched to those resumes that come in that match the type of jobs they have. So they automatically match. I actually see all of them. I see anybody that's indicated an interest in Story County comes to me. We create those in a database, and then we share those out with our workforce sponsors or if I, if I see something specifically that I know matches our openings. So openings also come through me, so that's how I can kind of somewhat at any point in time know what our job...
Okay, but we're spending money. I mean, we pay for that program here in the county. So I'm really asking if they're public records?
I suppose they could be. I know that they do come to LeAnn and Brett. LeAnn, I share them with them every week, so they do have those. So I suppose it could be. It's not as asked, but they do have them. At least I try to remember LeAnn, right, to send it to you every week so that they keep their follow-up. So if you ever wanted those, LeAnn and Brett have them, I have them as well. K-12 engagement, so a couple fun pictures. The Community Academy is something new we sponsored this summer, really focused on STEM, and program is unique because it was preschool through 12th grade. They broke them out into various tracks. They did real-life projects out in the community. That program really launched this year, but it will be available countywide moving into next year. Spent some time with some students from Ames, pardon, excuse me, teachers from Ames, actually took them out into a few of our industries where they had a chance to get tours, actually talked with the panel of employers from the research park. So again, trying to connect teachers so they have a better understanding of the types of things that are needed by our employers. We were excited when Ames was selected as a future Iowa summit location. So October 9th, please mark your calendars on that, and you'll see that promoted through our communications. I'm assuming by now, maybe some of you have seen that invitation. That's really an opportunity to hear about the state's initiative to ensure that our graduates are leaving and getting the education they need to take the jobs that we have available in Iowa. And then Ames High is hosting a career fair. Now, everybody's like, "Well, why are you promoting that?" Well, this year, they've actually opened up the career fair from 9:00 through 12:00, so that's 1,450 students. And so I know already some of the county employees have volunteered to assist with that. They're looking for speakers, they have booths available. Adam Carroll is going to be our featured speaker at that event. It's going to be quite an affair and what an opportunity to have a chance to make almost such a large population of students and quite an undertaking by the school district.
You have a question? Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, sorry. For the future ready Iowa on October 9th, I went on to try to register and I couldn't, according to the link I got on the press release. Do you have a secret formula to be able to get registered?
I don't, but we better make sure. I'll alert Workforce Development today that there was a problem with the link. No, I probably got the same email you did. But so again, we're just looking for opportunities to bring some of those conversations local, and so we're working with Workforce Development to do that, thinking about parking downtown and those sorts of things. So I want to talk a little bit about Marshalltown and, you know, general concern about that workforce. I have found out that there is some disaster recovery that can assist people, the 26 weeks is the extent of some of that special unemployment. But regardless, there will be a lot of people that want to get to work while they're waiting for businesses to be rebuilt. The numbers impacted are astonishing from a housing standpoint and really a very large number of businesses impacted, including one very large employer. So I need to applaud the responsiveness of I Workforce Development in Des Moines, stepping in to assist Marshalltown. And so we're going to be doing an event on September 20th at the college, co-hosted with our offices and both Des Moines and Marshalltown Workforce Development. We've already got really strong response from our Story County employers to attend and participate. So based on the response at this, this one will probably end up following up a few months later with an additional event. So again, we're on that, and we also have a number of our employers that have already started interviewing, we're actually onsite at the Workforce Development offices in Marshalltown. Just something we need to be aware of. We'll start to, I didn't, I haven't seen claims. I wanted to try to find that this morning, I couldn't. So I guess we'll have to be patient and wait for the unemployment numbers to start to roll in to just see how impacted the community is from an unemployment standpoint. So let's talk a little bit about our efforts to support economic development in the communities under 2000. So the good news is, is that as we've worked to support the communities, and I think you're all aware, that we've got a lot of positive things going on in the 10 communities under 2000, and so much so that we decided that we needed to kind of divide and conquer the communities in our offices a little bit. So Dustin is going to be assisting me with Gilbert and Rowland for now, and we'll be continuing to analyze where else it makes sense. He comes to us with a very strong background in rural communities and great planning services. So I'll still be your point person, but Dustin's going to be helping me out specifically with those two communities to start and rolling into others. As I share with you our plans for city council coverage in August, I noted where Dustin is also going to be. So as you know, it's hard to hit on Monday nights, the council meetings that go on in the county. So it allows us also to ensure that when we need to be in those communities, that we're not trying to go from Ziering to Gilbert, you know, you know the conflicts we have. So his help's already been much appreciated in the two communities. Again, so we'll start to stir in Dustin's, Dustin's work into these numbers when we report later this year. We've had 142 just connections and contact, face-to-face visits, 43, 33 project or development-related meetings. I've attended, or we've attended, 18 supervisor meetings and 19 council meetings. So again, with two of us kind of more actively working on this, we should see better attendance at the supervisors' meetings and some additional city council meetings covered. And some highlights I wanted to talk about, that's a picture of the latest project, if you've not had a chance to get down to the south side of the county, fun things going on down there. We're working on a catalyst building project in Cambridge, so really modeling the efforts of what Ziering did. And so the Legion Building in Cambridge, as of last week, actually came to the city. So the Legion is going to start utilizing the community building, the new community building, and now vacating that building on their downtown. Some opportunity for upper-story housing in that building. Collins has really been the rock stars in terms of their utilization of the Story County Housing Trust Fund. So I'll look to Greg. I think we have five applications, Greg. So they got funding to do a minimum of four, and of course, can do more. So work has started on Collins, on some of the efforts there. Collins Gas Station, do we have ground started there yet?
Soon.
Yep, I knew it was soon. And I won't forget, one of the first meetings I had in Collins was, I was, "What's your highest need?" And really, honestly, they said, "We just want to buy gas in our community." And they're certainly meeting the needs on things like soda and things that come out of a vending area down in the community. And honestly, their little, their little downtown district is blossomed with some new small business support, and so we've been helping...
We'll be fueling October.
Okay, we'll be buying fuel in October in Collins. So Gilbert has done their first really urban renewal work on their own and really to support commercial development on the property that really lies just north of the school. And so Dustin was in Gilbert last night. I assume things went smoothly with one of their final readings as it relates to the rebates they're going to be offering to the commercial development director, commercial development developer there. The Ziering is well underway on their historic building. I'll be up there tomorrow to get an update on that project. It's taken a while, but Larson Drilling has actually started their site work in Rowland. We were in Rowland late yesterday, and even just in a matter of days, the additional work to prepare that pad for that building. That's going to be a beautiful pre-engineered sucho building to support that very, I think it's fourth generational business in Rowland. Rowland's also working on a new pool. They've got a very energized group of moms, and one dad was at the meeting this weekend to discuss plans for a new pool, not an aquatic center, just a simple square pool. So we're trying to be helpful to that process. And also, Rowland, the development board there, is working to expand their residential and their light industrial areas. So they've identified two landowners that are willing to option some property to the local development board. So kind of some neat highlights, lots of fun proactive things going on in communities. And just a couple pictures. So the building, the bluish kind of building is the extreme concrete building that's going into the Cambridge Industrial Park. I think that's probably their last lot. I keep reminding Scott Young and the mayor that we need to be thinking about expansion of that area. Cambridge, the right-hand corner is the work that occurred probably last Friday on the Larson Drilling project. And I, this little whimsical wine trailer gal, her energy towards her little startup business is contagious. So that's Nikki from Collins and her little whimsical wine trailer, actually a ramp ride. She was over at Polo with me at ramp ride. And then the lower right-hand corner is a building in Kelly. Have you guys seen the building in Kelly? I don't know what the business is, I have to disclose that, but that is going up on Main Street in Kelly. So very exciting. We'll have to, those of us that are attending the Story County Economic Development Group meeting on Thursday are going to have to find out what that building is. So again, thank you for letting us work with your little communities in Story County. It's a treat, they certainly keep us busy. Any questions for the team?
Did you send something out in regards to the Catalyst Grant application there in Kansas or Rob James is helping us on that?
Actually, so Rob James was very helpful in Ziering with their building. So I asked Rob if we, our offices could ask him to assist with Cambridge, and he said, "No, I'll just come out in Cambridge. I don't need any compensation or any stipend to support that effort, I'll just help." So again, is that just not the best Story County story? So he's a great resource, glad to help on historical projects, at least was willing to help out in Cambridge. And so I'll be meeting him tomorrow to talk through the details and hopefully he can get us through the pre-application phase on the Cambridge building. So we got a lot of that work kind of done already, and Scott and Steve have been very committed to that project and keeping our, and the state's actually been up to see the project as well. I think they're very interested in supporting that initiative as well, but we'll have to get through the application process.
Super, thank you. Dustin, how's your first couple lines gone?
I'm shedding my green ones, so.
We're glad you're here, glad you're working on it. Dan, I told you I wasn't going to let you get away without speaking. Can you give us 30 seconds on how everything's coming together as we look at a consolidated effort for all of Story County, utilizing your staff's talents and efforts? Morning.
Sure, good morning. Phil, I'm David Colhane, Chamber Economic Development Commission. It's going well. The Nevada opportunity has really accelerated. Really, our last conversation is with the Story City Economic Development Organization, and we've met on a couple of occasions, and we're talking through what our relationship might be. Historically, we've had a really healthy relationship with Story City for many years. You all remember Rich Olive, longtime supporter and champion for that community. We worked with Rich for a number of years and just kind of traded things off, and now, since his passing, that organization has changed a little bit, and I think they're looking for a little more assistance from us than we've historically provided. Typically, we would provide some marketing efforts and things like that. They did their own existing industry. Now we're talking about incorporating their existing industry program into ours, so that we've got one point person doing existing industry all over Story County, which we think makes sense and is helpful. What's really unique right now, and I think you all are aware of this, is that there's so much activity in all the corners of Story County, and Brenda illustrated that really well today. It's really, really neat because Brenda's had the keen ability to really demonstrate value in a wide variety of ways. value in a wide variety of ways across the county, whether it's housing or a new swimming pool. If you called, Dan called, and he goes, "Hey, we need a swimming pool allowed," then we'll find somebody you can talk to. I probably wouldn't have that answer, but Brenda does. And so as a result, we can show value, really in many respects on your behalf, since you're the funder of this part of our programming for these communities. That's been exciting for us as a team, our entire team that works on all these things. That's been exciting to see how we can show value in different ways to different communities. At the same time, with the Nevada contract, John Hall leads that contract on our behalf as their executive director. But what's been really fun for, I think, again, our team, is that as projects come together or opportunities present themselves for the Nevada community, it isn't just John bearing the burden of that responsibility. We're sharing that, and we're plugging different people in and providing different skill sets to whatever the process might entail. And so it's a pretty exciting time, you know, I've said this for many years in Ames, but I can say this enthusiastically about Story County right now, it's a great time to be here, because we've got meaningful economic activity in all parts of the county. And, you know, I see occasionally on social media someone will say, "I need a job, and there are no jobs in Ames or in Story County." And then you see Brenda's report this morning, and you see the kind of data we see on a regular basis in our office. And if people would call us, and frankly, we're not a job agency, but if people call, we'll hunt something down, we'll provide opportunities, or at least provide them different ways to find meaningful opportunities for themselves. And so there's a robust employment opportunities that exist out there, and, you know, that's the business we're in. We're in the business of placing people, frankly, and if we can help someone find an opportunity, we'll go to all ends to do that. And so as always, we appreciate the support of the board supervisors. It's fun coming over here, because frankly, it's pretty easy talking about fun stuff like Brenda and Dustin talked about this morning. So I'll answer any further questions if there's anything else, I just thank you for your time.
Yeah, and I just want, so I said Friday morning at our AEDC executive meeting, and I'll say it now in front of everybody, what's really cool to watch, so the AEDC in Story County had built a pretty nice program, right? Grew camps, efforts were outstanding as we ramped that thing up. But now Brenda Dreyer has become the first call for most of our mayors and city clerks throughout the county on any issue. Dustin, we expect the same thing out of you on the cities that you're going to lead. What a cool resource to have for our smallest towns. And I wanted to be sure you heard that here in front of everybody, but I mean, I think there was major consensus in our executive meeting, how fortunate we are with the team you've put together, Dan.
We're far more effective in deploying what you've asked for as a result of these two people in particular. So yeah, you're doing a great job, but we are in a good spot, we're in a good spot right now, given the expertise, the previous expertise of both Brenda and Dustin, Dustin's had an extensive background in, the guy's rural Georgia, he loves rural America, and so this is a really good fit for him too.
It's good stuff. So I think about, what, it's been four or five years since you sat in that chair and talked to the board about what the AEDC could do as we went through that whole process of determining, and there were some naysayers about spending $100,000 on this kind of efforts. For me, it's gone beyond my wildest dreams or expectations. What's your assessment of our first, whatever it's been, four or five years?
Oh, I'd say share the exceeded expectations, because again, five years ago, we were talking about marketing sites and buildings and bringing traditional economic development across Story County. And if I've learned anything in this process, is that, and I knew this beforehand, but I mean, I've really seen it, is that economic development takes many, many faces based upon community. And so that's why I'll reference the pool again in Roland. Of course, that's an economic development activity. They'd like to get someone to buy a house in Roland, or build a house in Roland, or make investment in that community. And so we want to continue to create those opportunities so that we give people reasons to say yes to all of our communities. And that's really probably our biggest focus, folks, every morning when we come to the office, is how do we get people to come to Story County? Yeah, we always want job creation, but at one level or another, we think there's always going to be a pretty significant meaningful capital investment in job creation here in Story County. The challenge is, how do we get the people, no matter what their background is, no matter where they're from, or what choices they make after hours, if they've got skills and they've got competencies to help our business community grow and our communities grow and be vibrant, then we want everybody here.
Absolutely. So final thought from me, and I'll just have you address this, and then we'll see if, of course, Marty had any questions or comments. But I absolutely believe, and happily for several months now, that Story County has positioned itself for some paradigm-altering transformation economically over the next half dozen to 10 years. You look at where everything is headed in terms of bio renewables and all the support that goes along with that, you look at how Iowa State University and the research park is growing and prepared to go. I just, I want my two partners to hear from your perspective what the potential is over this next half dozen to 10 years that we're looking at right now.
I think we're in a really good spot. And I say that, and I agree with what you've already said, because the research park continues to expand. Prairie Industrial Center is a new opportunity for, sure it's for Ames, but it's for, it's going to be a job center. We've got good infrastructure in Story City, we've got good infrastructure in Huxley, we've got good infrastructure around the county, and so there's plenty of opportunities there. And at the end of the day, if we can continue to attract people, again, we're going to continue to see significant investment. We had a company a month ago that was looking at Prairie. It probably didn't make a whole lot of sense for us to be at the table, but they wanted to talk to us. But it was a good chance for our team to really sell hard on why this is a really, really cool place and vibrant place to do business and attract people. And so as we move forward, I think people continue to see significant opportunities for capital investment, see significant opportunities for employment. And I say, "Well, Dan, at 2% unemployment, how is that possible? Well, here's how it's possible. We're one of the few counties in Iowa that's growing." Now, we're not growing by leaps and bounds by any stretch, but we are growing. And at the same time, we've got a little bit of a false sense of security that every year, between 6,000 and 7,000 students graduate from an upstate university and are looking for their first employment opportunity. And so the purpose of the internship program is to say, is to catch them before they get to interstate 35 and say, "If you want to stay, if you want to stay, there are meaningful employment opportunities here. If you don't, we've all been there, we've all gone off, but you know what? Think of us when you're looking for that next opportunity when you turn 30 years old, or whatever it might be." Because at one level or another, there will always be meaningful employment opportunities. So what we need to continue to do is make all of our communities vibrant, so that there are places where people can say yes, they say, "Hey, I don't want to live in a big town like Ames, I want to live somewhere else. Or I want to live closer to the one because my spouse works there." Well, then live in Huxley, or live in Cambridge, whatever it might be. And so we should be really bullish on our future, because, and then I'll land the plane here, because right now, right now, we're pretty well alive, you know? If a poofy opportunity came for a hard project, I wouldn't be bashful to come here and say, "Is there anybody the board supervisors can help us? Or can you help Nevada? Or can you help this community?" Whatever that community might be. And that's how today is different than maybe it was 10 or 20 years ago, is that I get a sense that we're all in this together, and a lot of that has been as a result of the meaningful work that's being done, the meaningful investment that's occurring across the county. So it isn't just Ames that's waiting opportunities right now. It's all of our communities are seeing benefit and gain and value from that process, not just from our efforts, but from collective efforts, of you folks, our organization, and the people that are investing their dollars in those communities.
Absolutely. And I said the last thing, and I clearly didn't mean it, but you said something that made me think of something else. In addition to keeping more of our graduating students in Story County and drawing people to live in Story County, we need to recognize that we're a net importer of people every single day. Last time I saw the number, a couple of years ago, we were importing 6,000 more people to Story County for the work day than were leaving. We need to continue to grow that opportunity. I mean, we would rather them live in Huxley, but if you live in Hockney, that's okay, come work in Story County. If you live in Boone, come on, work in Story County. Marshalltown, you're over there in a month or so. Come on to Story County and work, and let's make sure that we have the expertise and workforce necessary to be able to continue to drive that investment. You guys are doing a great job with that, thanks. Questions for Dan?
I'm on the AEDC, and I have to tell you, it was a, when I joined it, it was a we versus you. And we're now at a time where we can't get enough exposure in Ames, with Ames, to share the collective message that your organization is not John Hall doesn't want to provide. He provides leadership in a way I didn't think that, you know, a young man like that could provide. While it's never on the agenda, part of the meeting always turns to the fact, "Thank God we had AEDC myself." And I'd have to say, I remember the conversation just by reading it in the paper, hearing it, by people that had the pushback in regards to, "Does the county really want to provide a couple of dollars to a portion?" I had a position to bring this on. I would tell you, after two-plus years of doing this, I would know where we would be if we hadn't. I would hate to have to start at this late date to bring into being what I suspect will come to be and not that far off this in the future if we didn't have our commandment to provide your organization to stand it up, to work on behalf of Ames. We're going to have one of those stories here later today. Brenda, I spent a lot of time with, and she, one of the things that strikes me is she'll never tell you how much work she put into bringing that Larson Drilling building into being. There was no small amount, but thank you. Collins is going to talk to us here in a little bit. I go into these communities, you know, as far as you go, these meetings do at night, and she's at the table, she's the resource, she's the face, she's the phone number, she does it. Dustin, that'll be your story here too, I hope, coming up, but thank you, Dan, I'm glad that Story County does it. I look forward to continuing to do that.
How's Dan? Laura, say anything?
I think what's been said, I agree with it, so I think we'll just move on with the thank you, Dan, and thank you to all your staff. How's that?
Thank you. My final party comment would be that the resources that you invest in our organization give us the ability to hire people. And that's the difference. And that's why we restore collaboration, because it's hard, it's hard to hire really good people. My first job at college was in a small county in North Iowa, and it's hard bringing someone there. And so what we've been able to do is by aligning forces and dollars and resources, we've got really competent people like Brenda and Dustin sitting here this morning that are really doing exceptional work. So thanks for all the kind words, thanks for your ongoing support, and don't be bashful, never hesitate to contact us, we'll be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Next consideration of minutes from August 7.
Move as presented.
Seconds.
Motion in the second, Chief.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Pass personnel actions as listed, board.
Move as presented.
Second.
Olson.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda, let's pull number one for discussion, brief discussion, but if there's a motion that you-
We move the consent agenda, thus, aye of one, yes presented.
Seconds.
Motion in the second, Chief.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Number one, Mike, I don't know if you even need to come up, it was just, they're misedition. So it's really $4,998.24. Our original agenda went out at $4,098.24. So just wanted to note that. If there's no question, I take a motion to approve number one.
I would move that we approve number one as presented and then.
Motion in the second, Olson.
Aye.
Chief.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. All right, that gets us down to public hearing items. Second consideration of ordinance 274, renaming a portion of Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Way. Jerry, no reason to go through, but any comments?
I don't really have any, it's just the quarter-mile stretch of Lincoln Highway, came with the name from Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Way, quarter-mile west of Potter, which is finally renamed. The city of Ames, city council approved it June 18th, from I-35 to Potter.
Any thoughts on whether we need a third reading or not?
We haven't heard from anybody, so I would think that we'd be good to proceed with the wave of the third.
Questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
None.
All right, let's open the public hearing on ordinance 274 and ask if there's anybody who would like to address the renaming of Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Way in the portion that is now in the city of Ames. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we close the public hearing. I'll turn to the board for potential action, noting that you may move that we waive the third reading and make this our final reading if you so choose.
I move second consideration of ordinance 274, waiving third reading for renaming a portion of Lincoln Highway to East Lincoln Way as presented.
Aye, second.
Motion in the second, waiving third reading, so that we make this ordinance into effect today. Further conversation?
None.
Chief.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. 274 passes, and that is the final reading. Thank you, Eric. Next item is consideration of resolution 1911 to enter into a purchase contract, and this one is Carroll Prairie. Mike, come on up, talk to us about this one.
Good morning.
So if you know, there's been this property that we've been working on for a number of years for not that much, funding efforts. Unique piece of property that was offered at a significant bargain sale from a landowner, and it is significant for conservation for a few reasons. One, it really hasn't been developed. It has many areas of remnant, native prairies, so native landscape that hasn't been touched over the years. And so those are few and far between. It has been grazed over the years, but to no real ill effect. The folks that have been grazing it have done it in a very sensitive manner to the landscape. And so it's a wonderful property. West Indian Creek runs through it, it is north of Nevada, and we just see it as a nice opportunity to conserve a little bit of additional natural area of cattle. Having said that, we entered into agreement, if you will, relationship with the Ipanoag Purge Foundation, as we do with any land acquisition projects. They purchased the property upfront and gave us time to do the fundraising effort and to pay them back. So short story is, the fundraising effort came up with almost 80% of the funds for this project, a very small piece that comes from the county, $10,000 to be exact. And so it's Conservation Board recommended last night that approved the purchase order, or purchase agreement to the same.
Yeah, so I mean, so let's just talk this through. First of all, it's 50 acres for $80,000, so that is truly under market for acre, acre ground. It's not ground that we're having to necessarily restore, although we would like to see improvement, but it's something that has existed in a basic state that we want. And then we had unbelievable success with the private fundraising. So asking the people of Story County to contribute $10,000 toward an 80-acre jewel along West Indian Creek, I think is a reasonable request. Questions before we open the public hearing?
This is out by me, I've been at this thing for a lot of time. Conversation fell out of a township trustee, that, you know, Erica's really good, Amy's really good, you know, very good at talking about remnant prairie. And by looking at that, how can you tell? I mean, this is inside to the issue at hand, but when you look at someplace and you say, "Oh, that's remnant prairie," how do you know?
People that are better at identifying plants than I am.
Okay, that's good, constant.
Go there and identify all the different native plants. And some native plants have more of a tolerance to disturbance than others, and those that don't have a high tolerance, if you will, if those plants are present, and if there's essentially a diversity of native plants that are there, including those sensitive ones, then we know that there really hasn't been any human touch on that landscape.
That makes it special to itself, then.
Laura, say anything before we open the public hearing?
None.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address resolution 1911, which is purchase agreement for Carroll Prairie. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. I'll turn to the board for potential action.
I would move resolution 19-11 to enter into a purchase agreement for the purchase of property locally known as parcel D with the rest of the legal to be as presented.
Aye.
Motion in the second.
For, for the amount of $80,000.
Motion in the second, amount of $80,000 for the parcel that we're discussing. And I'll just note one more time for the record, while the purchase price is $80,000, we're talking about $10,000 of taxpayer money going toward this purchase price. we're talking about ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money going toward this purchase price. Further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. We bought Carroll Prairie. Next one, talking about Jordan Wildlife and consideration of resolution nineteen thirteen enter into purchase agreement known as parcel C, and I won't read the rest of the, uh, rest of the description. Mike, take us through this one. This one is even a more dramatic example of how we can leverage funds.
Yeah, we thought Carroll was an exciting story. This one is much more so frankly. Again, we worked, had a partnership with the Natural Heritage Foundation to work with this. This project's been, actually was started just months before the Carroll Prairie project. And in fact, I remember a fun conversation I had with the director of the Natural Heritage Foundation and we chatted about the Carroll project and we were just embarking on the Jordan project. And I said, you know, I don't want, I don't know if I want to bite off on the project right now. So we are interested in Carroll, but that, Jordan is our focus. And so, you know, Natural Heritage Foundation and, and ourselves, I guess, moved forward with that confidence that we can accomplish both. So it was, it was nice to, it's always nice to partner with them. The Jordan piece is one hundred seventy-five acres south of Ames along the Skunk River. And it is, it's a property that has both floodplain and has old river meanders in it because it was, it, the river used to run right through the middle of it. The river was channelized, it shifted off to the west side of the property. All the old river channels and meanders, or significantly number of those are still evident on the landscape there. So we saw that as both an incredible opportunity to protect some floodplain, do some water quality benefits, do some riparian restorations, provide another wonderful wildlife area, hunting area, wildlife viewing area, et cetera, and do a number of things and accomplish another, a number of other goals at the same time. Beautiful piece of property. We said there's a lot of potential here for diverse landscapes, different habitats, et cetera, a lot of overarching goals. To make a long story short, we were able to acquire significant grant funding for this project. And so this is all said and done, approximately an eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar project, including acquisition and restoration. We received, I should say, the project received the largest equipped grant that was given out, that we think has been given out in the state. And so that's NRCS, that's federal grant project. And so that went toward restoration of the property. Acquisition was helped by a federal grant, another federal grant we received in addition to a state grant that we received from, from hunting license fees, if you will. So we received those grants, they covered a large portion of this with a significant private fundraising effort. And all said and done, out of that project, what we're asking for today is five thousand dollars to come forward through the taxpayers of Story County to support this project. And then roughly fifty-two hundred from the Energy Transfer Fund. And that, well, that completes the project now with all the other fundraising. So incredible project, a number of groups on board, the Pheasants Forever, Outdoor Alliance of Story County, I think Eastern Audemars, and just several organizations that are behind it because they see the significance of this and the, if you will, the potential just overall community benefit for it. So wonderful project, again, thanks to family, again, for a bargain sale on this property as well. And those are, those are just incredible, those bargain sale mechanisms are incredible mechanisms that allows the families to, you know, support conservation efforts. And at the same time, maximizes their tax benefits for the property, property sale. So that's a wonderful tool that's, that's in our toolkit, if you will, for my acquisitions. So this is a great project. Conservation Board has been very supportive of it and last night recommended that Board of Supervisors approve the purchase agreement.
Outstanding. Questions for Mike before we open the public hearing?
Long process, graduation of the selling together, all the funding streams, and a five thousand dollar ask that is very modest, so.
Well, yeah, it's beyond, it's, it's unbelievable. It is, I mean, so let's just be clear, what happened here? Hundred and seventy-five acres, really prime kind of conservation ground that needed some restoration, right? So five hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price for the hundred and seventy-five acres. Another three hundred and thirty thousand dollars put into the re- restoration of that hundred and seventy-five acres. So eight hundred and eighty thousand dollar total price to do this, and we're asking people of Story County to contribute five thousand taxpayer dollars to make it happen.
And that's a walkback from the ten thousand we put in the budget process, so we actually keep doing this, Mike?
Spectacular demonstration of what can be accomplished when we have great people working to get it done. These are, both these properties that we talked about belong with conservation. One, because it is native remnant prairie, and, and the other one, because it's where it sits on the floodplain with all the old meanders and the potential of what that ground can be and how it's going to be utilized for the public. You talked about the relationships with the different hunting groups and, uh, uh, natural, uh, nature groups. And I just think it's a really, really good project.
I would, no, I don't think it's a red flag.
Yeah, I was just going to open the public hearing.
Last question. You talked about this on the Carroll Prairie too, about bank restoration. What does that mean? What would we see there when we started with that?
What would we do at Jordan?
Well, either on a bank restoration, you had said, you mentioned that that's part of what the acquisition, what you wanted to see going forward.
So we've had some early conversation with a couple of groups about doing some restoration along the banks at Jordan on the Skunk River. There's one bank in particular that really needs some stabilization. That has not been funded yet. But we've got some feelers out with some different organizations. There's funding potential out there. There's some of that work. Rivers, additional rivers like to be entered, and that's, that's what we do. So this river was once as straight as an arrow along the west side of that property and now this property, well, it's real estate on all sides of the river. So that, that tells you it's, it's meandered and it's going to continue to meander. And so there's a couple of areas that we'd like to do some stabilization projects on. Some of those can be as simple as hard as tree plantings, or maybe some, uh, shrub plantings. In other areas, we might have to do, maybe employ some of the methods that we're using at, at the Escobal for stabilization, but there is, there is a need to do some work there.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay, let's open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address resolution nineteen dash thirteen, purchase agreement for our neighbors. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, I'll close the public hearing. Turn to the board for action.
I would move resolution nineteen dash thirteen, bring in the purchase agreement for the property known as Lord Acres, parcel C, for the dollar value of five thousand, county contribution.
Yeah, but the purchase price is five fifty, our, our, yep. So the total purchase price that we're, that we're moving on today is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
A second.
Motion in the second. Marty's a hundred percent right. It is five thousand tax dollars that were put into this. Further discussion? Chief?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passed. Mike, thanks.
The only thing I would add to that is we do have an open house schedule, dedication schedule for next Friday, twenty-fourth. And we have six o'clock, the program starts four o'clock, you can arrive. I'm speaking at six.
And people can walk around in the area first, correct? But the actual dedication is going to be near the road?
Correct, yes.
Just send it, like invite out just to, you know, put that all, do emails and that way.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks.
Okay, moves us on to additional items, discussion, consideration of memo of understanding between the City of Ames and Story County in regard to the Justice Assistant Grant JAG Program. Oh, Connie's going to speak to it, outstanding.
Unfortunately, you got stuck with me.
No, don't ever say that.
So since we have the JAL, we've got to be part of this application, right?
Yes, this is the first year that we have done this, uh, the Ames Police Department has done this application or done this grant, but this particular grant of the JAG has to have us included. And what they want to do, they're asking for eleven thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. And that money, they would like to put towards, to improve the security and access to the local public safety network, which, hi, my T is here, can you give me more information on that? That would be over my head. But the funds can be used towards training, towards supplies, towards anything because this is a security, but all the agency discussed, what they would like to do this.
And the, the grant itself is the eleven thousand and odd money. It's not coming from us. We just need to be the co-requesters.
And there is no match, so we would not have to put any money towards it. Because sometimes the JAG, you got to kind of just sort of mount, this does not have a match.
Yeah, and so I don't, I don't think I'm overstating this, Connie, but if I am, just help me out. This is, this is an Ames grant. This is, this money will go to Ames, it'll be for Ames to use. It'll benefit potentially all law enforcement, but it's Ames grant. We simply need to be part of it since we run the JAG. It's something we've done in the past, and unless there's any questions, we'll just move on. All right, so then I would look for a motion.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding, aye, between the City of Ames and Story County for the Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Motion in the second, further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Chief?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passed. Thanks, Connie.
Thank you.
Next is consideration of countywide watershed assessments. So a month or so ago, we had a joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Conservation Board to receive and re-discuss this report. And now it is to come to us in our capacity to accept the report as the Board of Supervisors. We've got Pat Comrade and LeAnn Harder to talk us through it.
Good morning. Hello, good morning. Thanks for having me. Well, we, it's the, uh, little presentation pulled up. I'd like to, again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you guys. I think that between your vision and, you know, the leadership provided by LeAnn, like, we developed a pretty, I think, pretty exciting watershed assessment product for you. Really does kind of put you in a leadership position as far as a county looking at watershed issues, you know, not strictly a watershed organization, but being that done on a countywide basis is kind of a unique, unique approach. And I think, again, together, kind of working through what would be in this, what we would cover, I think we really did come up with a, with a, a cool tool for you guys.
Have you seen anything like this from another county or even from any entity dealing with multiple waters?
You know, there are some, no, it typically is done on a watershed basis. There are some county, counties in Minnesota are required to do watershed planning or water resource planning, but it's a little different than this. As far as just a general overall watershed look, look at what our resources are, how do we do business, how, how, and the way that we do business can affect water quality. This is fairly unique, I'd say. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm just going to really briefly run through the contents of, of the report. You know, many of you had a very detailed overview, going through page by page, it felt like. And I'm just going to hit on some of the highlights of what is in it. To basically start out with a summary of what are your water resources, what is that kind of, that stream network? Looking to some of the characteristics of the watershed that affect water quality. Look at a little bit of watershed prioritization, you know, which are the more important resources to residents of the county, which, which streams are used more regularly than others. And then, you know, a series of recommendations, recommendations for how do we give water quality improvements in our different land use types, if you will, so from major culture to urban areas. And then, like I mentioned, we did, the project somewhat evolved into a review of how you guys do, do business in the county and what kind of recommendations can we make to tighten up those types of things. So with that, maybe I'll just kind of walk through a little bit and give you a flavor of what's in the report. So water resource summary basically goes into, you know, what are the expectations for use of streams within the county, and then which of the streams within the county aren't meeting those designated uses? So where do we have impaired waters? Where do we have concentrations of nutrients that are too high? Where do we have streams that have high bacteria counts? Where, you know, there's maybe recreation is somewhat impaired for those? So we walked through that, discussion of the priority streams, the riparian areas adjacent to the streams. So kind of an assessment of how wide of a buffer do we have around these streams? How many areas do we have where there's, you know, maybe row crop, agricultural right up against a stream? Or there's urban development pressures right against a stream? Kind of get a sense of what the quality is of that riparian, riparian area. And then again, a discussion finally of, of the lakes and the limited weapons that remain in the, in the watershed. The watershed assessment, you know, we walked through, you know, basically the kind of characteristics of the watershed itself with that watershed network, you know, that we looked at coming down from the very high level, you know, majority area, it rains through the Skunk River, but there's some other, other, the county is somewhat unique in that it hits some of these other large drainage ways. So you can see the other types of things that we looked at, land cover, where do we have environmentally sensitive areas? So areas that are, you know, prioritized for purchase like you just did. How, how does topography, climate, soils, groundwater, how, how do all of these things impact our, our surface waters? Finally, we did a gluten source assessment where we specifically looked at land use and different, all these different characteristics in terms of how much phosphorus, nitrogen, and sediment are being produced to run off into our streams as well as bacteria. Kind of put that together as a way of identifying hotspots throughout the watershed where, you know, these are maybe areas we should focus on, or maybe areas where we're getting higher loads of these nutrients in other areas. And then finally, we did a, an inventory of the existing conservation practices within the watershed. So the DNR has put together an inventory that identifies where different conservation practices are already located on the landscape. So here's a map, you know, of what we call, refer, referred to as hotspot maps. This one is for suspended solids. So these are areas that generate, because of their characteristics, their land use, their topography, their soils, these are areas that generate higher loads of suspended solids than other. Just kind of give you a flavor. There's a series of maps for the other fluids as well in the report. So then a major focus was the identification of protection areas and restoration areas. And I'll hopefully be showing you a, a webpage, a story map that we developed for you that you're now posting on your, your, your webpage. That kind of goes in very detailed look at these protection areas and restoration areas. And again, for the protection areas, that would be the areas adjacent to the stream, wetland areas, and source water protection areas. So we've identified all the areas where we have source water issues to the local drinking water wells. For restoration areas, you know, we look at restorative wetlands, the impaired lakes and the streams, degraded stream buffers, and then some of the, like, the plant communities, if you will, like the, like the native prairies and those types of things. And then we've done an assessment to identify where, where do we have priority eroded stream banks? And that was a fairly detailed analysis because, you know, throughout, throughout the county, we have quite, quite a bit of stream bank erosion. So we went through a process of kind of prioritizing where we have the worst stream bank erosion. And then also, where does that intersect where there's maybe some infrastructure? A home, a bridge, a roadway, where is it, where is that erosion going to potentially cause problems in the future? And kind of flag those as the highest priority stream bank erosion areas that, you know, that to be addressed in the future. We then developed, part of, a fairly significant portion of the project was the identification of agricultural conservation practices. So we used a tool called the Agricultural Conservation Practices Framework, or ACPF, also commonly referred to as the Tomer Tools that were developed here in Ames. That is, that is a tool that allows- That is, uh, that, that is a tool that allows us to find where on the landscape are different conservation practices appropriate? So where does grass soil, grass waterway go? Where do we have opportunities for nutrient removal wetlands, um, et cetera, et cetera? So we ran those tools and kind of developed a game plan, if you will, for each of the HUD quotes of watersheds within the county of saying, you know, here's where there are potential for different conservation practices on the landscape. And here's kind of a menu or a scenario, if you will, of how you could potentially get to, uh, future reduction in, in those nutrient loads as a result of those practices. So there's a lot of information. We also have another, uh, story map tool that I'm hopefully going to demonstrate today, um, that shows the output of that analysis. That's, that, this alone puts you in a very, very unique spot with, um, very few others. These ACPF tools have been run for, or being run for most of the watersheds that are in the HUD grant. If you're familiar with the HUD grant project, the Watershed Approach project for the state. Um, so there's, some of the watersheds are getting this for all of their HUD quotes, but, um, not, not all of them. So this, this actually provides you with a very unique, uh, very powerful tool for identifying where conservation practices can go on the landscape. Um, finally, in addition to that, we did, uh, some recommendations for how to, uh, address stormwater management in the urban settings and the developing settings. And then finally, some approaches specific to bacteria. And so those are all outlined in the, in the report. I addressed through the stream banks, but this gives you kind of a, uh, an idea of that prioritization and really kind of pinpointing where are there specific locations in the watershed where we have that, kind of that intersection of stream bank and, you know, potential infrastructure damage in the future. Um, as far as recommendations, we've got, uh, as I mentioned, we have a, a series of recommendations for aggressive water quality and flooding. But then just basic recommendations as far as, um, a, a, a system to do monitoring in the future. You know, monitoring is a very important tool where we can compare the health of one stream to another and all the streams throughout the county, which is a very, you know, really important, uh, important component to watershed management. You know, we want to see what's going on in our resources. Can we detect any trends in our resources and should we prioritize an area, uh, one area against another because of the, you know, character of that water? Finally, a handful of, um, reviews that we did along with county staff to review some of your ordinances, review your role as drainage district trustees, uh, county road authority, uh, or, uh, particularly as it deals with stream crossings. Just kind of the, the, the things that you guys do as general operations and kind of looking at it through the lens of water quality and opportunity, if you will. So if you're going through and you're, uh, redoing a roadway that go, that, and you're having, and you have to update the stream crossing, well, let's do that in the most beneficial way for that stream. And let's make some recommendations for maybe getting some water quality treatment in any kind of road improvement projects. So we look at, we look at these kind of things as an opportunity for, you know, improving functionality, getting water quality improvement properties, if you will. Um, finally, a model stormwater ordinance we developed, um, that can be adopted by many of the smaller communities within the, the county, which, you know, I think is important. We saw earlier today with the, um, the, the presentation of, of, of the, kind of the development that's occurring throughout the county. And those are opportunities to make sure that, you know, um, we, we aren't making things worse in terms of water quantity or flooding in those communities. And that we can maybe implement some water quality improvement, um, pr- practices when we do those developments. So the online resources, uh, you can see here, I just did, I did a screenshot. And I think LeAnn may have done hyperlinks here to bring to the actual webpage. And if everything is working well, we can demonstrate how these work. Um, but again, it's on your watershed management page of your website. And the tools basically allow you to just go in, um, as we zoom down into the county, we can see that's where the detail starts to show up. Um, maybe we'll just have to do it again. Okay. So I'll let, uh, you drive maybe. But as we zoom in, if we've got a good focus loop in, and if we've got a good connection, the information will start to display, um, of like the restoration and protection areas. And it's, and it's possible that we don't have good enough, uh, a fast enough connection to, for the, the information to draw. But, um, the tools are there. The, the one tool, like I say, shows all the areas that are suitable for protection and restoration. And then the other tool allows us to go in and see where are those, where are those possible agricultural conservation practices? So you can see that the, the, um, the example on the left are the restoration and protection areas. Whereas on the right, those are the conservation practices. So basically what you're seeing in that case is you're seeing areas where there's, um, where, where, uh, segmentation ponds or denitrifying wetlands, bioreactors, all of these types of practices are, are.
Yes. So Lawrence, Marty, I don't know if you had the chance to go on and play with this. It is really, really cool to just kind of zoom in on a stream. And, and what I found myself doing was kind of following, picking a stream called West Indian Creek and just kind of following it downstream to see all the different practices that would be appropriate in your areas.
Yep. Yep. It's really, it's a very, uh, powerful tool. Um, so as far as next steps, I think that, uh, LeAnn might have some ideas for how to, you know, once this is hopefully accepted, how to kind of incorporate it into the, into county, uh, planning, um, through amending the comp plan and, and developing a limitation matrix. Um, you know, you have some recommendations in there for how to review and updates in the county controls. Um, I think we need to set some priorities. What, what is it you want to do on an annual basis? What, you know, I think those are discussions that need to come next. And I think we've identified some priority areas, uh, some things that are maybe of more concern than others. Things that to me kind of rise up to the, you know, what I would consider low hanging fruits of watershed management. So that would be the kind of the riparian buffers, um, livestock and food solutions, those types of things, uh, before we get into any of the major conservation kind of practices. Kind of laid that out and for you guys, and, uh, I think this gives you this kind of overall roadmap. And then it's a matter of kind of how do we incorporate this and how do we get this into your annual, uh, operations?
Perfect. So, yeah, so I think before us today, board, uh, we've got two items. First, uh, we need to go ahead and, and receive, uh, and accept, uh, this watershed assessment. Secondly, we need to have a discussion about exactly what Pat's talking about, what our next steps look like. Uh, and so let's deal with those individually. So the first thing I would ask is questions or comments on the countywide watershed assessment is produced by you?
I was pleased with the detail and how it was presented. It was, um, I felt, um, logical. I felt that I knew much more about, um, anything that we had data on. Um, this is not your fault that we had insufficient information for some of our water, uh, for some of our creeks, et cetera, for you not to be able to carry out all the way down about, um, the assessment. But you just noted there's insufficient data and anyone on it. So, um, uh, it's, I think it's a, a very good tool that if we want to look at it, implement some of these and, and. So thank you very much.
Yep. Marty, any?
Several thanks for having me. I mean, you're going to be some operations and landing numbers. It will be paramount, yeah, in the sense that I'm sure a few of them, that they're going to sit there and say, what's this going to cost me? And I think that you probably have some people who are being more inclined to lean forward than this back. And I, I, that's a conversation on a bigger term and a bigger basis because I have not looked at what you just did and get down to the level of it. They probably find a few of these places that are egregious offenders as far as, uh, bank contributors to the phosphorus levels and whatnot. Because these fields contributing in a way that, you know, practices and tailorsing doesn't met itself too, so. But on the monitoring side, I guess I would, you know, while we have you here, how, you know, did you see that, I, I read the Farm Reserve books on every Wednesday. And you see that being something that they're suggesting be done in places to, you don't know what you don't know until you measure it. And I guess on a placement basis, are there any guide, guiding principles or are you going to say, you should probably want one of these here if you suspect that?
Mm-hmm.
So I got some blanks here, but you can't be filling blanks.
Yeah, and monitoring is, you know, monitoring is a really complex, you know, topic, if you will. It, it, you know, it all depends on what your objective is in your monitoring. And that can be from, um, as large a scale as, uh, monitoring South Skunk Creek over South Skunk Ri- Skunk River for long-term, uh, trend analysis. We can do monitoring to, at the edge of the field to see, okay, what are the nitrate levels on, this spring? You know, so it all depends on what your objectives are. We sort of propose a, a tier approach where it'd be nice to get some baseline measurements on all the streams within the, you know, particularly the priority streams. So let's go out several times a summer, uh, during the growing season and take grab samples of all the streams so we can have some sort of database to compare them to, to each other. If we want to do information like, um, is this, is this a particular, uh, hotspot? Then that's a different type of monitoring. That might be going, um, and installing equipment in a tile discharge, um, where we're measuring discharge as well as concentration, so we get a real good sense of what kind of boats are coming off of particularly, particular area. So I mean, it really kind of depends on what your objectives are. And I think we laid that out a little bit in the report as part, as, as in terms of those different tiers of, of monitoring.
I think, I think it's a great conversation and, and it's not a conversation we're going to get to the end of, or really even the beginning of today. Uh, right? What's important for us today is two for, one, um, let's go ahead and acknowledge and accept this tool that's been produced for us. But then we have to fully recognize that just like any tool, if we stick it on the shelf and let it gather dust, it, it's not going to do anything for us. So we need to start thinking about how we're going to regularly pull this thing out and utilize it. Um, but we're not going to necessarily get to the answers anytime in the near future. We're going to start to have the answers of how we're going to get the answers, um, as we go. So the first thing I would ask is, is there anything else that we need to talk about before we, uh, accept this report?
I just have a question about the scope of services still available now that you've, um, issued the report. So as we move forward in our discussions, um, are you still, have we retained you to help look at? If we want to implement some of these monitoring, or if we want to go in, as I noted on some of the creeks earlier, we didn't have data of the same, um, depth, right? Is that covered under now, still the same grant, or will that be separate, would that be separate?
That would be separate.
Yeah. We, this brings us to today's action. Assuming we aren't sending this back for some kind of revision, uh, when we receive this, that brings us to the end of the initial contract.
And obviously, we would love to continue.
Minnesota is clearly eating on this in regards to how they treat their, uh, their water. In the sense that, now this is, this is a moderate question.
Yeah.
We have any, our opportunities to do that is going to come at an expense. What, you give me a guideline somewhere in Minnesota how they fund it? I mean, is that done through a drainage district assessment? Is that done through, uh, public tax dollars? Is that something, where does the dollars come to do all that? Because we're going to two, sit there and say, all right, we need to know more. We have a, a great template, and I agree with Rick. This should be treated as a dusty document that should be thumb worn from being pages having turn. How do we pay for it? Or where is the direction other people are going?
Right. So the, the example in Minnesota would be the watershed district. So the watershed districts in Minnesota are a special taxing district. They're set up somewhat like an independent school district where they cross, uh, county boundaries. They can cross, uh, you know, some of them are as large as 20 counties, some of them are only a handful of counties. But it's, uh, districts set up on a watershed basis. And those entities have, uh, they have taxation authority, but then they also have, um, the ability to set regulations. Regulations that they set typically only deal with development. So they're still, they're still not regulating or having control over the agricultural community. But they at least have the taxation authority, uh, to go through and, uh, get a pool of money available to do projects. There's also state money available through the sales tax initiative that was passed several years ago. Uh, and so the state, uh, has quite a bit of grant money available for the large projects. Again, you're, but you're also, but you're still working with this concept of find, in the agricultural community, of finding willing landowners that are interested in putting conservation practices on that pot. And that, that is always going to be a limitation. You know, I think as a county, you have somewhat, you have somewhat of an ability to, to identify, uh, poor performing areas. You know, you can go out and say, hey, this is not right. You need to do something here. There's a difference between that and like forcing folks to do things. But I think that's where you lie in, in, in your role in watershed management.
Well, that's some direction that gives you some hope because, once again, to implement a change is going to take some study, and study will be not free. So just, whatever is you're going to give me an idea on going forward basis, where I would look, possibly model some potential legislation.
Thank you. Anything else before we, uh, we consider, consider and receive the assessment? If not, I'd take a motion, uh, to thank EOR and Pat for his work and officially accept the assessment.
I move that we, um, accept the assessment and extend our appreciation to EOR and, um, to also LeAnn and Harder who worked with you very, uh, much on this, and Mike Cox, I believe, helped on this, and other employees who, who weigh in. So thank you very much.
Second. Motion in the second, and you're right, Lawrence, the list is long.
Yeah, I realize that it is.
Uh, I think we would be remiss if we didn't also acknowledge an external component. I think Craig Rivers of Iowa was reasonably helpful as, uh, as you worked through this. Uh, any further discussion? Olson.
Aye.
Chitty.
Aye.
Sanders. Aye. All right. Now, let's spend five minutes talking about, uh, what our initial next step is. My suggestion is, is that we, uh, form a little informal staff group, uh, to take, between now and, I would say, December, take a look at this report and possible next steps. And I say possible next steps because next steps are going to be determined by the Board of Supervisors. The reason I picked December as the date is that gives us the ability to work any of those things into our budget discussions, uh, as we move into FY '20. And my suggestion for that informal, uh, work group just to analyze this and what our next steps are, uh, would be LeAnn, Mike Cox, Jared Moore, and I would, I'm tempted to say Darren Moon, but I, I don't want to. I think I would, I would ask that Deb Shildroff be part of that group, uh, instead of Darren Moon, even though a lot of this is going to spill over, uh, or some of it will spill over into secondary.
What would your reasoning be not having Darren?
Because Darren has a completely full plate and will between now and December. Not that everybody else doesn't have a completely full. But, uh, the work, the work that Darren's got going right now, um, uh, a- and some of his, uh, staffing issues with, uh, some of his people out on leave and, and things like that. I think just make that a little problem out of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That, that was.
Uh, and I, and so if we're willing to ask that group to get together regularly between now and December, I think we're looking kind of on two tracks. And that is potential regulations and policies that we might want to look at sooner rather than later. And the second one would be practices and monitoring that we would want to look at. I think Marty brings up a great point, uh, the low hanging fruit in terms of any projects is going to be based on willing landowners, right? So there's two schools of thought for how you go. It is, you pick a, you pick a s- stream or a section of a stream and you go in and you try to take care of that, much like what we did at Tedesco, right? Where, where we focused in, we focused energy and dollars on one section of one stream and really tried to bring it back. I tend to think that's kind of unrealistic simply because the county doesn't own pieces of property like that. And so you're going to be working with landowners. But we ask staff to really review those kind of things and give the board options of what we're going to want to look at in calendar year 19 and what we're going to look at budgetarily for fiscal year '20 to try to move this thing down the, down the field.
Um, any review or suggestions that the staff comes up with? I'd like to have some, um, estimates of costs associated. I'd like to have some, um, estimates of costs associated with particular plans of action because that's important, um, for us. And then, um, I, I, I think, um, I agree with you about being able to look at, uh, to say, hey, we can just put these on landowners is not going to work. If we can find some volunteers for some projects, that's great, but I do agree that, um, we're going to need some more data or monitoring. We're going to need some, um, a better plan to lay out. I remember the initial meetings of this watershed, so we need that, um, that there was a lot of confusion and a lot of hesitation among landowners.
So that was the meeting that Paul too talked regularly about. That was the meet, and we've, we've sat through some, some, uh, master matrix discussions. We've sat through some tough discussions. He said that was far away the toughest discussion, the initial swag. Did you go up with him for that one, Leanne?
I don't know what it means.
Oh, good, Sam, yeah. Paul said that was far away the toughest.
Well, you bet it.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, people convinced that this was some kind of ploy by government to, to force a reservoir or to force practices on their property. Um, the other thing that I would say is if we are going to, uh, ask these employees to meet regularly to give us recommendations, one of the first things that better be discussed is where exactly does this reside? I, I know, I mean, you could, you could make a case that it's a special project. You could make a case that it's conservation. You could make a case that we need to have a contract with some kind of outside entity, uh, much like Prairie Rivers does with our two watershed authorities. Uh, you could make any of those cases. You better start to have that conversation of where this resides because if we don't specifically say where it resides, it effectively resides nowhere.
Correct. Correct. Um, okay, so internal versus external. I would say that, uh, from an external perspective, bringing, um, somebody who's done it, whether it's Prairie Rivers or EOR or anybody from external and have a lot of experience, um, there's a cost involved with that. And I read, go through this report and just the ideas that pop to my mind, I just read through my highlights from June again, and this is a time-intensive, um, critique, I think. So, uh, so I think that a cost allocation for external, we need to get a quote back, um, before we can make that.
And all on that, yeah.
I know, I'm, I'm just working through.
Absolutely.
So internally, either way, we're going to expend internal time resources for people who are already strapped on this. And as I look at this, um, I'm going to turn out to Jerry, Deb, and Leanne who are here and Mike here. So what do you think, a group like this to go ahead and really take a look at some of these strategies, even if you start with recommendations? Are you looking at maybe once a week, once every other week?
Well, this is the first meeting they've ever heard of.
I understand.
I would imagine they haven't, uh.
Well, Mike, and I have been thinking plenty of had meeting scheduled for tomorrow to start talking about how do we, how do we go forward from here? And this, incidentally, tomorrow as well, um, since the same parties, except Deb, you can, Darren will be there, we're going to be starting to tie that up and then CQC and incorporate this. Um, I don't know if it's a bi-weekly meeting, I mean, I think those are details that Mike and I continue our meeting tomorrow is directed.
Yeah, and so I'm not trying to suggest that the board needs to mandate how often you need.
No, I understand.
What we'd like to do is, absolutely, I think you're right. I think what we need to do is, we need to make a request that by a date, and I'm calling it sometime in early December, uh, that this group worked through some recommendations for the board or options, not even recommendations necessarily, just options. We could either do this or we could do that. And, and so there were six people in my mind that I think you could easily make a case of that they belong on this group, and that is, we talked about it, uh, except for Margaret, Leanne, Mike, Jerry, Deb, Darren, and Margaret James are the six. And I narrowed it down, uh, to the four, uh, because I think it's most applicable, uh, to Leanne, uh, Mike, and Jerry, and I'm asking Deb to do it because of her role with our external and the fact that I'm trying to leave Darren out of this.
Right, so Deb can go to Darren as needed for specific, yeah, advice on that. So, um, I think Leanne, I look at it as a special project or I look at it, I guess in my thought would be conservation, one of the two, um, with that because of previous work already in the, in the areas. I mean, um, uh, and Jerry, I know that you contributed greatly to this. I just, um, um, from a development standpoint, you're going to get a lot of input, but I think overall either conservation or Leanne with the, the previous special project she's done would be the two that have the most continuity of, okay? So there's where, I'm down to two, all right? Down to two. Be quiet, let somebody else weigh in.
I think we start the conversation internally. I think it will quickly turn to the fact that it will be such a heavy lift, we will probably bring somebody on a contractual basis. Um, we were doing this in Story County, the story you told me, Pat, was the fact that, uh, it will probably move out if we're going to do this well and, uh, large scale is going to go outside of our county, we're going to have to find partnerships. But initially, I don't think that they've been through the, uh, the collation of this report, information provided, we can give ourselves some sense of direction and scope. So I think that, uh, December is a great timeframe. It is August, I think they can come back with us and with some recommendations, it's what they'd like to see you done. They can keep us noticed as they have their meetings to, on the takeaway, what they're going to provide, what they're discovering, what they'd like to have. I don't want to tie Pat down any further with my silly questions, but you know, you did, uh, Horace jogged something in my head, and we do this all the time and we go through the budgeting process for secondary roads in regards to building bridges. You had said through your presentation that bridge building as it could be a contributor to water quality. Can you just briefly brief it down, taking this any further, go there?
Yeah, and it, I think it's more of the smaller crossings where you've got, uh, where the, where the bridge or the culvert crossing becomes a restriction, if you will. You know, so when we're, when the flow comes through, a lot of times that, that, that culvert becomes a restriction. Um, if there's any kind of elevation change on either side of the road, that can be, uh, impass for, for fish. You know, there's a lot of, uh, there, in many cases, there's some filling that can occur alongside of the roadway in construction of a bridge, but mostly it has to do with allowing that river and/or stream to continue to meander, um, and not change its shape as it goes through a crossing. You know, we mentioned the, the rivers might turn meander. Well, when you, when you box them into a crossing, that affects not only that, that section of the stream, but how, uh, a ways downstream. So it's basically just a way of sizing that crossing, so it's appropriate.
Not just sizing, but the other thing I saw you mention, Pat, when you presented to us, um, out in Foreland Park is actually, and I hadn't even considered this until you presented it, but actually, um, sinking the box of a box culvert a little further down where instead of having a concrete floor that the water runs across, you have more of a stream. I mean, the culvert is sunk underneath basically the stream bed, and so it's just a continuation of the stream through, uh, through the crossing. So, uh, yeah, those are all things, there, there would be a definite financial factor in that. So, so I'd ask this, Leanne, Mike, Jerry, Deb, any of your schedules such that, that you either can't or aren't interested in serving, uh, on this internal, uh, informal work group over the next few months?
I can.
Good. Jerry, you're good?
Excited about it.
Okay, good. Mike, you're good? Leanne?
And then coming back to in the work program also and thoughts about, um, conflicts, about big projects coming up, and I'm just thinking about the Story County, um, the housing needs assessment, if the Story County Economic Development Group is going to decide to take that on, I think that's probably going to rest with Leanne on that. And Mike, do you have a special big project coming on? A, a big, a special one coming on that's not on your work schedule right now?
No, I mean, one of the biggest one coming up for us is, uh, the road.
Okay.
The road in presentation.
This is already on, I mean, I just, yeah, taking a look at, at resources here.
Good.
Thank you, Pat.
Pat, good job.
It was a great presentation on the Foreland, just a very thoughtful report that gives us the opportunity to be a first in something else, and I'd like to think we're going to use it.
Great. Super good. Yeah, thank you. Any objection to, direction to staff for specifically those four, uh, staff members to be, and put together some, uh, options and recommendations for the board to consider in early December?
I would give you comfort and small comfort, cold comfort, in this, Horace, is a transition period. All it is, is from today to December.
I agree. I understand. Thank you for that cold comfort, okay? It's, it's. Blue board.
Your concerns are worthy because the thing is they're here and they do a lot of things quietly that are not noticed before the public, but I think this is something that's now here, what do we do with?
Right, so Rick, because you brought up, who's going to, who's going to take responsibility? Who's the, the entity? Are you thinking then to have the work group of four make the decision about who would be the entity to take it on?
I think the four of them, no, I think the four of them get together and figure out what their plan of action is. They know they've got a date certain in December.
Okay.
And they divide up tasks, and when you're only dealing with a group of four, um, you, I think that you just trust those four to figure it out. And then, and then I see, Horace, that we're going to have to make some really, uh, big-time allocation of decisions in December.
Right.
And, and both financial and time constraints and, um, uh, being able to figure out who's actually going to take us the next couple of steps. This is just trying to figure out what those next couple of steps are and how do we go about it.
It's an internal RFI.
Okay.
I think their advising consent, I think we still retain the ability to give direction. We will just have them do the studies, Horace.
Well, I have great faith in all four of them. Their abilities to work together and to make decisions.
Good, good. All right, there's the direction. Thanks, Pat, thank you.
I do want to publicly thank Matt Boyd, our GIS coordinator.
Absolutely.
What EOR, EOR did and made it all, so we can post it and there's quite a bit of knowledge.
Outstanding. Matt is a phenomenal, does work. Outstanding. Next discussion, consideration of application, uh, for a facade grant improvement for the city of Collins, and I'm not putting a dollar amount in because I understand it has changed based on the rules of our grant. Uh, Leanne, you're taking us through this?
Um, first few slides are very familiar, I don't believe in them, but just again, the purpose of facade improvement grant, like financial assistance to the government, they act as the applicant, um, okay, and private commercial businesses. Um, it's a one-time reimbursement grant up to 20% or not more than $10,000 towards a total project cost. And, oh, yes, that's right, that was in the confusion. And, um, Brad did provide a call of email that clarified that they are looking at 20%. They originally thought it was a 50%.
And is it 20% of the $18,660, is that what we're talking about?
Oh, not of the 25. I thought the total budget was 25.
No, 20% of the 25.
20% of the 25, okay.
Um, of, of the total project cost.
Okay.
And the city is required to provide matching funds equal to or greater than, um, those matching funds can be direct funds or in-kind contributions as well. The program guidelines do define, um, the nature of in-kind contributions. Ever I spoke to this, the eligible, the applicants in the city with, in those communities, I mean, 2,000 persons, I've got one exception, I'll show shortly, um, eligible for this are those that have been publicly involved in the right of way. So, and up in, um, Zering, the car wash, you can see it from different parts of the right of way, but it wasn't necessarily just a facade, facade of residence. Um, so this kind of city of Collins, um, there are three, there's Main Street property, several addresses, um, three property owners currently, June to May. The most assured stills on books is the official owner partner of the buildings in the city of Collins, on hold works. Um, this is generally the location in, I need to remember that is a blue square, the command projector, the blue square is roughly the boundaries of the buildings that are involved. And, um, as you can see right along Main Street, Collins. Scope Services, that's defined in application, um, uh, provides facade improvement for those three, three different buildings, painting, wall repairs, doors installation, landscaping, signage. Total project cost is $25,510. And the, um, then 20% request is $5,102. And Collins is required to match that, but they do unanticipated contribution of upwards of, or below $5,500. Property owner are putting in, aside from the city of Collins, um, are putting in $4,150. So that's a little bit, um, wonky in that Collins is a property owner, but again, this is the city, as the, um, city applicant, I think we, we count it all as the Collins project. Just a quick snapshot of what we've done with this program so far. Um, we started in 2015 and, um, I've put these in the fiscal years because we do it before, but they only budget $10,000, but a lot of times the funding doesn't actually come through in reimbursement to the fiscal year, but this is one of the, the non-royal that won't necessarily match up with when they were allocated. Um, city of Zering last year, or so far this year, but in fiscal year 18, city of Zering, Story City, that is the one exception, so, um, communities under 2,000, that's a special grant the board considered in the city Cambridge. The prior fiscal year, Cambridge again, and then city of Slater. Um, city of Roland and Zering, the second year of Roland, our non-royal, um, project comes with the city of Zering in fiscal year 2014, not including what is before you today, um, total project funds that have been allocated, where these are just under $30,000, $20,958, by like the second number, the total project cost, these are improvements I've done currently in Main Street, is really nearing the $200,000. So, um, Matt Evans is unfortunately not here, he's exploring Hawaii, but he did create a story map. Um, the story map begins in GIS application online, um, specific for our, our facade grant improvement program. This is kind of a two-fold, um, now sheet. Um, yeah, let me see. The technology is great.
Sure.
We heard that total voice there.
Yeah, I'm not going to go sign in. Um, I would show it to you if I'm not going to be able to. Um, you think, um, this will be in the office and I'll show it to you, but, but what we're doing is, um, he's taking all the allocations, um, the first few slides are just an overview, and I don't know if you've seen the story map, but it's a, using GIS, it's a way to visually tell the story they did with the capital purpose plan, we're doing it for a rural area project deal. Um, I'm going to share it with the Story County Economic Development Board hopefully this Thursday. We did it for the first impressions I could get as well of all the communities. Um, but it's a way to visually see before and after too, and have all the information that the public can understand the nature of this program, but the potential applicants can use it as well to understand the program. So, sorry that did not work, but next time.
I love that we've leveraged $28,000 into $200,000 in improvements in basically our smallest towns plus Story City. Um, like I, it's a, it's a, is exactly what this program, Leanne, was supposed to do, roll back to the first time you and I talked about it. Uh, and, uh, I'm excited now that, uh, that Collins is stepping in and wants to take advantage of it. I expect that, I hear in rumblings that we're going to get an application from Cambridge here before long. I don't know if you've heard any of that.
I've heard some, some saying.
Uh, but I think the application we got before us from Collins falls exactly in line with what we like to do. Um, are there questions, comments, or a motion?
I have no questions. I have a few wonderful meetings, Horace, you got down to. I think this is a city on the rise. We were just speaking, you know, quietly about the new car toll. Car toll coming, with Atlanta has come to us and do a $15 million build out, which I suspect will phase development into something larger. I think you're going to see, you know, on the Housing Trust Fund allocation of dollars you can see from here. I would point to Collins and sit there and say, this is what success looks like in a small community in our county. With that, I would, uh, there are no objections. I would move to granting the application of the Story County Facade Improvement Grant Program for the city of Collins for what was that, five?
$5,102.
$102.
I would second that.
Yeah, Collins doing a great job.
Doing a great job.
Keep it up.
Thank you very much.
Chidi.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes $5,102.
And I have a comment. Congratulations on thinking just a little bit out of the box because, I mean, it's three properties you're doing. Because, I mean, it's three properties. You're doing something with three properties. And with the color, the whole thought process behind this is not something that in reading the facade grant first time through would probably kick in. So, congratulations.
Well, and I think she's already left, but I think we're gonna get a lot of creativity to get this through. As I understand it, she's gonna have some of her school, scale students to help with some signage out there to get consistent. I mean, it, well, with the health center and stuff that you got in downtown, Collins has changed over the last half dozen years downtown. This is gonna take it the next step. So, now I hear they've got a good real turn down too, so.
Oh, who would that be?
Next discussion, consideration of the FY20 funding priorities for assets. A couple weeks ago, or maybe just a week ago, Deb was before us and we asked her to go back and work with our asset volunteers to come up with potential, more specific priorities. And it looks like you've done that.
Good morning. Yeah, good morning. So, before you is the draft document. It looks considerably different than what we have used in the past, just in terms of formatting. I did get input from those county asset volunteers that were available. You know, they had vacation, so I'm gonna be sure that this person have to go back. But all in all, they were pleased to hear that the county was looking at prioritizing priority, the turning priorities. And we really kind of looked at what our categories had been and synced them up in terms of basic needs, safety and wellbeing, and promoting self-sufficiency. So, those are kind of the categories we came up with. We did talk about eventually moving in the direction of the three categories that are within the asset process, income, education, and health. Since those are the broad categories, that's how the services are aligned within the third impact scorecard. But didn't feel like we could make that leap of jump quite yet with the information that we still need from scorecards. So, that will be forthcoming in the next few months. So, we do want to continue having the overall statement that services funded by the county must be available and accessible countywide. And the categories are listed right now in prioritized order. I certainly want to entertain any comments and changes that the board has in pre-prioritizing those if you wish. But please note that the sub list under each of those categories are not prioritized. So, there is some flexibility there under the heading. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the board for questions or comments.
So, I mean, it looks to me like, and I appreciate us getting the priorities, one, two, and three for us to talk about and consider. But it looks to me like, really what we're doing here is we're offering more clarity to not only our volunteers, but the entire asset volunteer base of what exactly we're looking for here in Story County.
Correct.
Question or comments?
I'm comfortable with how these are ranked, with basic needs being the first priority and safety wellbeing second and self-sufficiency. We know that eventually that's where they won't need services from one and two, but we need to get them to that point. So, yeah.
Yeah, it just looks to me like this is the logical progression of what we would want to want.
So, thank you.
Knocking out, you guys covered it well. Alright, take a motion.
I would move that we adopt the funding priorities for Story County for fiscal year 2019-20 in the asset process as presented today.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Deb, as always, great job. Olson?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes.
I want to extend that thank you to the county volunteers as well for meeting with me and giving the inputs. I think that, again, is just valuable to have the volunteers.
We've got great volunteers.
Deb, we had also mentioned a week or two weeks ago when we did this first time, okay, about the idea of possibly some pilot money or a different category to consider when we looked at maybe in January. What did the volunteers think about that as far as for new programs?
They were interested in learning more about it, I'll put it that way. They, I talked to them, as I talked with the board, about the new service needs and service requests that NASA received in the dollar amount that was tied to that and how we want to be able to use the priorities in order to provide those dollars in those areas of growth need. And so, I think, and I kind of have to work that for my mind a little bit more as we go forward. And once I see the budget requests that come in from the asset agencies, which goes the end of September, and then what I do is I bring that information to the board as we discuss the dollars that will go into the allocation process. So, I'm hoping to put more of a formula in place at that point in time, once we know what the requests are going to be across the board.
But now, help me remember, Deb, because it feels like, without formally doing just exactly what we talked about, a week ago, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, feels like we almost did this through the asset process when there was a shift in school-based mental health funding, that that was a new program coming in. And we put some dollars towards specifically at the training in those, but we asked that those dollars not be taken from any of the growth from the other, from the other end. So, I think in essence, that board talked about, let's make sure we add enough to be able to handle this, but still recognize growth. This would be just a more formal way of doing it.
Right. And just to kind of let you know, I'm hoping that maybe Deb and I can get together in the next couple of weeks to talk about what would it look like for people who follow the asset, what would maybe it look like for people who are not in the asset process? That, I've got some ideas about, you know, as we talked about that, what if we put a few pilot dollars toward a program brought by an outside group, you know? And then maybe that's something for coming for the board to discuss more headed into January. You're looking at it like...
No, so I just, I think that through and I think, first of all, anybody can come before the board and request it. So, I'm all in on that. But my initial reaction is always, we have this unbelievably good process, the asset process, and why would we not want to steer everything toward that? Now, that said, the school-based mental health program came out of DCA, right? It was funded by DCA at first, and we really had to work hard to get it into the asset process, but we didn't ever fund it from outside the asset process.
Well, and that's why, you know, I think...
But that's the look was.
Yeah. Is to talk about, you know, where do we go on this? And I think I offered before the reasoning was, is if somebody doesn't qualify to get into the asset process, because it's agency status or it's time status or whatever. But I just want to let you guys know.
Yeah. Worked the conversation. Anything else for Deb?
Well, just, I mean, a couple of my notes from that conversation two weeks ago, where to look at the new and expanded services and what underserved area are they looking at providing services to demonstrate expected impact? And then how do they best fit the priorities that we have.
Yep, absolutely.
So, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
I think I appreciate the phone.
Thank you.
Really good. Next is IRVM Quarterly Report. Joe, you gotta slip out in the hallway and get your show and tell item.
Hey.
I saw you carrying green stuff in.
Well, leave that in the mail.
Did you just stop in a ditch on your way, on your way in?
I actually did not. It came from the front of the shop.
Oh, just in front of the shop, okay.
So, alright. There's one thing I have to get to.
I always wonder what happens across the road from me.
Do you get to see it?
I get to see it. This is an installment.
Gil Quaker is never boring.
You can pass this around.
Thanks for, hold on here. Let me get organized. The one you're organizing, I want to say thanks to you and Mike and also Jim Peace for the little travel tour we took of the ditches a month or so ago. When I was out at the fair on Friday, my husband and I then went to a presentation by the DNR. It actually happened to be on pollinators, but then it went into then about growing, you know, not going into the ditches or whatever. And I felt like I actually could follow it. So, thank you.
Yeah, that was good for me too, to get you guys out. Appreciate you taking the time. So, the last time we spoke at this, you know, quarter report, I think was Burns season or just after Burns season. So, I'm gonna start there and try to go quick. I do have a little bit of show and tell. I wanted to be informative, a bit of business, and then we can learn something. So, we burn the Prairie Rail Trail. I already scared them off.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Alright. We'll just go with yes.
Yes.
I've done that before. So, the Prairie, you know, Prairie Rail Trail is a remnant. We've heard talk or the word remnant a couple of times. Mike, you said it already this morning. I still think it's this morning, just about. So, it's one of our neatest linear areas we have. So, we don't spray that very often from brush. So, it gets brushed. So, what do we do? We burn it. So, we burn it. And that plant that I just distributed, that is the Michigan lily. It's also commonly known as a turks cap lily because it was named by old botanists because it upside down, it had like a turks cap looking thing. So, the, and Sidney, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you're the Prairie guru here. But the conservation, coefficient conservation on that plant from one to 10, unlike how cool it is, is a six, which is pretty good. You gotta be really rare-ish, neat plant to get an eight, nine, 10 up in that. So, it's kind of a neat plant to have. And it happened because we burned it. So, just a little tidbit of information.
So, when I see that in the ditches popping up, and I can't think, Greg, would you point you, would you see that right now in a ditch?
You would not see that. We, that's the only place I've seen it.
Okay, but I will find that. I know I've got your phone number.
I'm gay.
So, thanks, Greg. Moving on. Late summer, late spring, early summer, we got our seasonal people hired, which is quite a process. And finally, we did get one right safety day, and then they were both great kids. The next one came in about the first week in June, which is a little later than normal. We worked hard through the summer. They had things going on. And so, they left actually two weeks ago. So, typically, that doesn't happen very often. They stay up until school, but they had things going on. So, it's been Tyler and I running the show. And the reason I say that is because we do have out there a position open for six months, possibly at that time, full-time, 40 hours a week. I guess you really can't say full-time. It's a 40-hour-a-week position to help IRVM do their fall/winter stuff. And that's all on the website. Out there, a little bit of prescribed fire, some clearing trees out of open ditches, some seed harvest, and some hybrid seeds, some planting. So, so, right as the summer staff came on, we had safety community meeting. We had the safety day and we went right into weed control. So, that was Tyler doing most of that. And the other staff, we did the planting. You know what happened late spring, early summer? They had a lot of rain. And so, a lot of those sites got washed out. Darren and his crew, they've done a good job getting back. They're busy digging every day. I haven't. It's kind of happened in what we call the dog days of summer. I'm not gonna go back and see right now. It's not the best time to plant your yard. We're gonna wait till it cools down a little bit, another couple, three weeks, we get back to seed. So, that's where after that. So, weed control, we've basically focused on hard surface roads. We did spend a lot more time on gravel this year, mainly in Palestine Township. We had some landowner operators down there that have been on here pretty good. So, we just spent some time down there. We haven't done that in the wild, driven the gravel roads as much. So, that helped out, you know, our relationships with that area. And, you know, we fell a little bit behind on the payments, but it's all good. The brush contractors were done last week ago Wednesday. So, they were here for 10 days. They came in and they worked 12 to 14 hours a day. We did put out a press release prior to them coming in to the public to kind of see what's going on. We're a little short in Franklin Township on brush control, but we're gonna try to get better in the house. So, if we can, among all the other stuff. We did get some input from the public, a little bit of concerns, a few pats on the back saying, thanks for controlling the brush. What are you using? Not really gonna go into that much. If there is a couple of concerns, I'm following up on and make sure things were done according to our policy. So, that's where we're at with that. Any questions on the brush contractors? Drainage ditch stuff. So, Tyler's been out. He's done a good job with that sprayer that we built. He's done the drainage ditches, I'm not gonna say all the names, but three of them up north. And then now he's moving to Milford 32 and to Grant Farm. So, we did send letters out in November letting people know that we're gonna be gaining access on, next to the open ditches that we have. We haven't had any problems. So, that letter worked out great. People knew we're coming. So, that's a good idea on that. Moving along. A little bit of equipment, glitches at the moment. I don't want to go into that. We talked briefly a little bit about our Boomer. It's a good piece of equipment, although it's old.
You had it since midnight, right?
1999. It only has 1,800 hours. So, it's been one of the most reliable tractors we have. But, and you just don't trade in a Boomer because that whole thing's specialty made. So, we're looking at different options. As we discussed, there might be another tractor available we could switch and not trade in. I'm working on that. So, next is our getting ready combine, right? We got the new combine, newish combine. It's at Battlewall right now. They looked at. They do a combine once over, just to kind of give you a heads up on what might be really wrong with it before we take it out. Obviously, we're not gonna get it painted and make it all shiny. We're just gonna make sure it's functioning unit at the best price we can. So, and we do have, I believe, four public seed harvests coming up, three in September and one in October, early October. So, we're gonna get some seed growing.
How many acres?
So, what's that?
How many acres of seed do you harvest?
Um, I go by pounds. So, and I can speak for Amy Oakum, a lot of the tan harvest, Marty. So, she weighs that and I don't have the figures. And then for pounds, usable pounds for me is around 300, Mark. And that's a lot of bulk at 10%. I'm gonna guess we do about 20 acres of seed harvesting through three or four different herdsries, but with this new combine, I think even more.
Yep. Thank you.
Odds and ends. So, I think I brought, oh, yeah. Something we've been working on. Now, who's gonna really know what IRVM is, you know? But I didn't come up with the design. It's kind of standard throughout the state, the no spray, maybe not the IRVM part. But we're working on providing a program, a policy, I mean, where those folks that don't want us to spray in Story County, okay, are gonna sign up. We have a map right now. It's over two dozen sites. And I'm glad people don't want, you know, not really happy, glad, just glad they're concerned about her site needs. So, they call us up and say, please don't spray. We're not gonna spray. But now, we're gonna give them signs of the option to do what Darren does and work in the right-of-way permit. So, they will now have to control the weeds or brush in their right-of-way in front of their residence we're talking about, okay? And that makes everybody happy because if we just say we're not gonna spray, then things get out of hand.
Right.
And so, we're working through that process. Any questions on that?
Good luck. On that.
Well.
Do you get phone calls? Do you get phone calls? You know, it's part of the process. I get a few phone calls. You get a few phone calls.
Be right back. One more thing. So, one of the phone calls I get quite often is this time of year. And it's this plant. Anybody know what this is?
Thistle?
Oh, you pointed it out.
What kind is thistle?
Is that a Canadian thistle?
Native.
It's a native thistle. We know it's native because it has white underneath the leaves.
Got it.
Okay? But it's still on the Noxious Weed list. Back in the day, when they made the Noxious Weed Law, they put all the species of thistle in the weed law. This, I believe, is either tall or field thistle. I think it's tall thistle. So, you see these right now, these are all gonna be purple, okay? A lot of people think these are, gonna run them out of the county, take over their fields, do things like that. So, we're gonna get a lot of calls on tall thistle. The other, the problem with that is they stay in place for a year. They're really not. I mean, weed laws are outdated. They're not that of Noxious. I, we may go do something with these if it's a site distance issue or it's something in that respect. The most part kind of breaks my heart because when you appear to like core knife one down, it's full of mowers or full of bees and things. So, it's a good pollinator species too. But it is on the Noxious Weed list. The next one, this is the only two I have. This is cup plant. It kind of forms a cup right here. If you get lost, Rick, out of the goodness, you can drink from this.
Drink from the cup?
Good.
It's important for me to know.
Maybe you can even, I don't know. But, um, so this is yellow. And a lot of people think this is sunflower, Noxious sunflower. So, they'll call us up and want us to go out and do something with this. Just a little bit of education, build a long way. Any questions on the plants?
Good?
Nope. So, I really believe that's all I have. No, I have one more thing, which is kind of important. We've been working on a project over by the county, Old County Home. I call it the Cows of Project. Can I call it that, Marty, I guess?
Well, I call it.
There, they have decided to make a field day of this. We got a really late start on it because of all the rain. We're working with a bunch of different folks. There is some washing and some work that we need to do. I'm gonna have the Fed's Forever, Story County Fed's Forever chapter come out. We don't have to buy the material, but we're gonna volunteer to put in some silk logs and some erosion fabric. I might do the erosion fabric first and the silk ones. But we're gonna make that project look nice when we have a field day. You know, did you guys?
Yep. It's two days. It's 28th to 29th.
Right. And that's in network with the ag, the farm progress, right?
I don't know that. It's close, but then again, this is the evening. You know, you don't need to go every day to the farm progress. So, you can, but anyway.
So, again, now here's one of your, this falls right in, dovetails right nicely in our session that we have in regards to willing partners as far as monitoring or whatnot. This is gonna be a site. This is one of our first go-tos. Get right north of town here. There, he's already doing this in Kingsville, Monsanto Conservation Department. To get there, it is right on the west. What is it, West Indian Creek there or what is that?
Correct.
So, this is one of our parent streams. We're already, we already have your first, your first go-tos. And I think they'll be where they're willing to decide.
And they were talking about doing two, two separate nights.
I think they are.
Well, they are doing two nights, but it's gonna be the same dang old night.
So, they'll want us there and we're talking about it.
Well, I mean, it truly is a restoration of what was a garbage dump that drained. It was, I mean, to see what it was to what it has become is shocking because the thing is, if you're willing to devote the time, because he's put brighter dollars, you can make this into something on a presentation basis, well, just, if he does nothing else, it's improved water quality. As you don't see soil transmigration into the creek itself.
Outstanding. Yep. Questions for, question for Joe. Joe, thank you. Thanks for the show and tell. Next, we've got conservation, Mike Cox.
But did you bring fresh water?
Joe.
Joe, who cares today? A lake.
You can have the weeds back, Joe. I'll leave it on here for you.
Very good. So, first, just a few, I'm gonna keep this brief, a few things. One, Tedesco government learning portal. You know that we're in the second year of construction there, second contract, construction contract. They're moving along quite nice. So, you've got a good portion of the concrete trail board. You're working on backfilling that, yes, we speak. So, we expect by the end of this month that we'll share all of the, just one caveat, but for the most part, all of the concrete trail board. And we'll be started on the permeable trail. And the permeable trail will probably extend a little bit into September. So, that's coming along really well. Part and parcel with Tedesco, but not just related to Tedesco. I had a conversation with folks from the Cardinal Clinic and their marketing for people and approached the idea of developing what we call Researching Trails Program. And so, in other words, getting clinicians or physicians to prescribe outdoor exercise. And the folks at MacCarley Clinic have embraced this wholeheartedly. And so, we're gonna be able to pilot project at Tedesco and trails around in that area, which dovetails with their presence at the research park. And then we'll come to look to expand that a little bit further with all of our trail network. So, tremendous project. I think there's a lot of potential there and a great amount of visibility, if you will, to the health benefits again outside and using trails. So, one of the projects we're glad to have from the clinic support that. Hickory Grove, as you know, we're in drawdown stage with the lake. We've got, we've probably got about six to seven feet that's been drawn down as of right now. We're still, still drawing it down. We're going to take off the top 10 feet at the moment. And, you know, all of that in preparation for the archaeology survey that needs to happen before we go to bid with our dredging work. So, that's why we're drawing it down now. The idea is to hit a bid letting in November with that project. And so, at the moment, everything is lining up in order to do that. We did relax the fishing regulations there a few weeks ago, a month ago. And so, there have been people taking advantage of that. However, at the moment, it's nearly impossible to get a boat on the lake. It's difficult, but we did have a good, say, three weeks of relaxed fishing regulations and a lot of people that did that. So, that's, that was nice to see people utilizing that. As you know, we budgeted money in the FY19 budget to do that restoration project or the county portion of that restoration project, which is 25% of the overall project costs, 75% being worn by the Department of Natural Resources. As we've moved through with design, we've looked at a couple of things that we would like to see as improvements in the lake. One is dredging the east portion of the lake. So, that portion of the lake on the east side of 680th Street or at them. And so, that might be an add-on to that, to that cost. And then we're also looking at some improvements to the boat launch by the campground and beach. Part of that, part of the rationale, one is we just know, we know we need more boat launch capacity, if you will, on the busy, busy days, all of our parking for boats, trucks and trailers fills up. And if it fills up now, you can only imagine what's gonna happen once we get a renovated lake. So, we're looking at some boat, boat area, boat launch improvements as well and some access improvements as we move forward. Those might be additional items as well. We're looking for additional funding for the, there's some opportunities for some grant funding there as well. So, we'll continue to look for that, but expect to have a project that hopefully we can get favorable bids and we can award that here at this calendar year. The plan would be then, if we get a favorable contract, favorable weather, then they could start work yet this winter. For the most part, that lake will be dry. We're planning on that lake being dry through next summer and that filling again in the spring of 20.
You gotta ask there, Mike, as we had, that people come out and fish and appreciate the fact that you've really opened up lake. You were talking, yeah, how long will it take to fill it? Is the question I get asked. I mean, okay, yeah, we're drawing it down, but now that it's going to be deeper and reshaped in a lot of ways, what's the timeframe ideally that you see? If somebody asks, it's not, what I, I said, I have no idea. I will ask. Oh, I'm asking.
That's a very good answer.
Oh, when is spring are we gonna?
I have no idea.
Well, it just, it comes up in the conversation because that's the end. You know, at the point where you've done all the restoration, you've done the dredging, you've done the archaeological analysis, you've done what you wanna do. How long is it gonna take to fill it?
People that were here when the lake was originally built accounted, or basically gave accounts of that lake almost filling overnight when it was built.
Okay.
So, it all depends on Mother Nature.
Well, I can.
How much rain we, how much rain we get. If we, if we can get it, if we get it done and can take advantage of maybe some late winter snow or some early, you know, spring, good spring rains, then it'll fill in a heartbeat. It won't take very long. It's 4,000 acre watership. So, you know, if, again, Mother Nature's favorable, it'll fill really quickly. If we're in drought condition, it's another story.
Thank you.
That's a good answer. I don't know.
Well, I can stay with that because that's what I've been given.
Yeah, very good. Prairie Rail Trail, just real brief. As you know, we've been working on this project for a number of years. I met with Ziering City Council last night with the request of using City Right-of-Way on the north and south side of Main Street for a trail connection to the street and to the sidewalk on the north side. They are, they're taking that under consideration, haven't made a decision yet. I need to give them some follow-up information here and forward that. They're willing to have a special meeting and bring that forward for a boat prior to their next monthly meeting. So, I expect that we'll have some answers from them very quickly.
Mike, a week ago, I went to McCall'sburg. They have annual next week corn feed. And I, as I was going through the line, I got asked, okay, but when are we gonna get the trail, right? When is it gonna be done? And then I was at McCall'sburg meeting last night and I got asked again. So, is there anything else upholding, holding it up other than the Ziering situation?
So, the project we're working on right now, just to be clear, the project we're working on right now is constructing the trail. First off, putting an intersection at the trail with Highway 69, 65, excuse me. And then constructing the trail from the highway into the city of Ziering, connecting to Main Street and their sidewalk system. We're not, at the moment, we're not planning construction work around McCall'sburg. Our long-range plan is to pave that trail all the way through Roland to Ziering and eventually connect from Roland to Story City. That's our long-range plan. But at the moment, the section we're working on is just west of, yeah, just west of Ziering.
Okay. Could you and I communicate more about this than later? All right. Because I think they want an update about when they feel that the paved part will come.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right.
Yeah, we'd certainly talk about that. Any questions, any other questions on guaranteed? Quickly, the, we're under contract with Construct Construction to do some water trail access improvements. We received a grant from the Department of Natural Resources, the Water Trails Program, to reconstruct two river accesses on the Skunk River. One at Peterson, near Peterson Park, and one north of Cambridge near or at Askew Park, where the, oh, the County Black Tuck crosses, crosses the Skunk River there. They've completed the work at Peterson. And as we speak, they're working at Askew. And so, that will be completed. Those will be nice launches. There'll be concrete launch pads that are designed so they don't silt in all the time. There'll be some maintenance, of course, on those, but they should hold up really well. Be good access, good accesses for anyone getting on or off the river. The only other thing I wanna mention is coming up, October. October 7th is our next Fall Festival. So, if that's not on your calendar, we should encourage you to attend that. October 7th, we're having a band vinyl, vinyl act.
Sing a bunch.
Is the band? And then we're having some food catered by Monkey Duck. So, that'll be a good, good event. And then lastly, we're, it's that time of year when we meet, when our staff meets with all of the schools and teachers, principals, et cetera. And so, we're doing our teacher meetings right now. Our staff are meeting with every elementary teacher and every middle school teacher in the county and just to design their curriculum for the coming year. So, so our staff is busy with that. And it's nice to be able to have that interface with all of those teachers. That's it.
Good. Question for Mike.
Nothing. Congratulations. You have a very robust and capable department. Keep it up.
Good. No, thank you.
Did the, did the valve work at different road or did they have to gear the rig some?
They worked.
They worked? And it's been what? 30 years since we've opened the house?
I think it was opened, I chose that. I believe it was opened in the 90s. Over some repair. But it'd been quite some time, 20-plus years since that's been opened. But we got it.
Good. Thanks. No other reports. Public forum number two. Opportunities for member of the public to comment on anything. If you'd like to come up and comment, come on. What about Cindy? You got anything for us today?
No, thank you for asking.
Absolutely. All right. Liaison assignment, it's Marty. Loris.
I'm just gonna bring up that in case we have time from 4:00 to 5:30 today, CFR is having their open house for their 50th, for 50 years of providing services. McCall'sburg is always a great relaxed meeting. And there was some good discussion down there. And just, they did pass their ordinance to allow people to drive ATVs and ATVs and golf carts around downtown on the streets.
Like I said, you can't go to Ziering and find an automobile truck. ATV, GPT, or GPT, sure.
It's a.
And golf carts. All right. If there's nothing else, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Hold it in favor. Say aye?
Aye.
Or adjourn.